Good morning. It is 10:00 AM, May 31st, 2022. We'll call to the Board of Meeting in Story County Board Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say, "It's like allegiance."
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have motion to adopt today's agenda. So second, we did seconded Burke.
I.
Kevin's side.
I.
Moving on to public comment number one, this comment is period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Looks like we have two people who have submitted requests to make public comments. Brad Perkins, come forward. And if you could just state your name again for the record, that would be great.
On the hour. Yes, Brad Perkins' address is 5500 240 Street, Ames, Iowa. My wife and I operate Raspberry Hill Breakfast at that same location. All right. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to address the board this morning. My primary purpose of making a public comment here today is to thank the board for all three of you for attending the public comment section for the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. As you could probably tell, in our county, there may be a decent amount of distrust for the process. And I think having all three board members there listening, paying attention was, I think that goes a long ways towards helping the process. It really does. And so I wanted to thank you all for going. I know you definitely didn't have to. It was an evening. It took a couple hours. So I want to, I want to thank you for going. And towards that end, though, I did want to, want to mention something about the process and about one of the things that you're discussing today. I also want to thank you for taking out that part of Chapter 91 with regards to my concerns about making our particular business a nonconforming use. Thank you for modifying that. Thank you for listening to that. And thank you for, for addressing our particular concerns. Having read through the current proposed Chapter 91, I think that went a long ways towards alleviating some of our concerns. I did want to mention, though, that part of the, it, it does all play together. The Code of Ordnance with Story County, the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, the public comment sessions. I just, I just want to, I just want to say that the reason we are so sensitive towards this, and maybe the whole reason a lot of people in Story County are fairly sensitive and more than mildly mistrusting of the City of Ames is that City of Ames Planning and Zoning does not have a great history of listening to its constituents and definitely no history of listening to people that are outside of the city. As an example, the reason we are so sensitive to the idea of getting classified as a nonconforming use, if you read in Section 91, 91.02, Part 1, it says, and I quote, "Is the intent of this ordinance to permit these nonconformities," that would be a business that gets classified as a nonconforming use, "to continue until they are removed," and here's the important quote, "but not to encourage their survival. It is further the intent of the ordinance that such nonconformities shall not be enlarged upon, expanded, or extended." Some friends of ours that maybe some of you may know that have a business on Lincoln Way, the Trickles, is Trickle Tire. They have been at that same location for 61 years. They are currently labeled as a nonconforming use by the City of Ames. They've changed their idea for what types of businesses should be on Lincoln Way. When they get labeled as a nonconforming use, they're not allowed to expand their business. They're not allowed to fix their business. If a duration, tornado, fire, anything was to damage it, they would not be allowed to repair it. The owner, Mr. Trickle, literally said, "We've been told that if a brick falls out of our building, we can't put it back." That's what happens when you get labeled nonconforming use. And in their case, they've been at one location for 60 years and suddenly they're being told that their business is no longer welcome. Imagine paying taxes, operating a business, employing people of the community, providing services, and then told, "You're not welcome." The exact same thing was told to us by City of Ames Planning and Zoning when we went through the conditional use permit process. They literally told us, "Well, we don't want you there." And we're not, and we prefer you weren't there. Did, yes.
I'm just, I'm sorry. What specifically related to what we're looking at today are you wanting to comment on? You're commenting in general on the urban fringe plan. I understand that. That's not the purpose of this. We have a specific ordinance. Is there something about the ordinance?
Well, one on, with regards to the ordinance, I was saying, "Thank you for changing it." And I, and I, and I do want to, I fear that perhaps my comments sound fairly conspiracy theory. And I, and I, you know, with, with my concern over the one sentence that was in the, that was in the ordinance. And all I want to say is, is that during this process, I would, I appreciate you listening, and I want you to understand our perspective of why perhaps we were fairly nitpicky about the one sentence that was in the ordinance. It's not now, and I want to thank you for taking it out, right? And if you'd just give me a second or two, I'll, I'll wrap up. If this is the, if this is the inappropriate time for, for the comment, I thought public comment would be the, since I didn't want to change the ordinance, I didn't think, I thought this would be the best spot for the comment.
But the comments specifically for something that's on the agenda today. So that's what I'm trying to ask you. Is there something that we're looking at today that you're, you're going to comment on?
I'm wanting, I guess I'm wanting to comment on, on that. I'm glad it was changed.
Okay.
All right. And, and, and I appreciate that. But if, if I could, I, I will, I will try to be brief. All of you that were at the, the, the hearing, you know, you, you got a chance to listen, and there's going to be a lot more. There's going to be more hearings that I will plan on attending, and a lot of other people will as well. I continue to thank you to, to listen, but also to understand some of the community's suspicion of the process. Because the City of Ames is not, they represent Ames. However, they have a history of running roughshod over people like my friends, the Trickles. And that's, that was our concern about the changes to the ordinance and is going to be our ongoing concern as we deal with the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. And my point here, I guess, is if I'll try to wrap this up, the point here then would be to, as we look at this, and here's where this plays into effect. We are going to be very, very concerned about being classified under Section 91.02 as a nonconforming use. And I think this is why this is where the comment belongs, because we are considering Chapter 91 today. Chapter 91 by itself, the way it's written, I don't have a concern over. My concern is getting put under Chapter 91 at some point by the adoption of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. And therefore, the whole part about is the intent of the ordinance to not encourage their survival. As someone that is starting a family business, has already spent more money than I'd like to think about, more hours than I'd like to think about. I'm trying to be able to pass it along to my children. I would encourage any of your dealings with the Ames Urban Fringe Plan to keep in mind Section 91 and what it says about nonconforming issues. I would not like to end up like the Trickles after 60 years worth of business, suddenly be thrown into a nonconforming use. And I do want to mention that at the, just as an example of the City of Ames, at the hearing, at the public hearing, there was a gentleman that was speaking that was fairly emotional about the whole idea. And maybe some of the things that he said weren't exactly the most eloquent or the most polite that he said while he had a time to speak. However, the response by Mr. Dykman at City of Ames, what he said towards a veteran, and I'm a veteran, veteran status doesn't get you one single bit of courtesy with regards to zoning. I get that. But the way that he handled it was horrible. I'm talking about Mr. Dykman. The way, what he said was unprofessional. And this is how mo, a lot of Story County sees the City of Ames, which is why some of the suspicion results. Thank you very much for taking a few minutes to listen to me. I appreciate it.
Rendell Turner. I think mine are more appropriate for comment number two. Okay. No problem. Okay, no problem. Yep. If there's anyone else who would like to make public comment, raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing, seeing no one raise their hand, we'll close public comment number one. Move on to discussion of Des Moines Airport Authority Terminal Project. Kevin Foley. Morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I am Kevin Foley, the Executive Director of Des Moines International Airport, 5800 Flewer Drive, Des Moines, Iowa. This is a follow-up to the presentation that we had made at the Economic Development Meeting that was held. And I've updated it, so I'm going to go through some of these slides very quickly because it's longer than, than what I had anticipated. But Des Moines is the state's largest airport. We have 65% of all of the commercial traffic in the state, and we're up to 55% of all, all the cargo traffic in the state. We are independent from the City of Des Moines in that once the board is appointed, and they are appointed by the City of Des Moines, but once appointed, they're autonomous, they're independent board, our, our, all of our dollars are separate. They, they function entirely independently like the board does, and we are not supported by any property taxes with the City of Des Moines. In 2018, we did a market analysis, otherwise known as a leakage study, actually, want to see where our passengers are, are coming from, as well as as those that are leaving this market, where are they going to? But a couple of things that surprised me. We think about all of our passengers basically being local passengers coming from the state of Iowa and then returning to the state of Iowa. They're not. 43% of our passengers are coming from out of state or out of country, coming into the Des Moines Terminal, going into the state, doing their business, or for leisure purposes, and, and then returning to fly out. And that, that percentage surprised me.
43%?
43% are coming from out of state or out of country. Yeah. This, this report was very detailed. And so by, by zip code, we can tell where our passengers or our local passengers are coming from. And I just listed the ones there. Ames was, was number 15 on the list. Nevada, number 35. Huxley, number 40, 45, and Story City, number 62. And you can see the numbers of the first ones there because I only put the first page in, in the presentation.
I see that Ames is number 13 and number 15.
I did miss the, so two different zip codes.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah. So it's all based on code. And this is kind of Big Brother type stuff. It's, it's off the credit card. It's off the address of the credit card, but it's purchased. So our current status at the airport is that we're, we are experiencing growth. Once again, we are, we are back at 95% of 2019 levels, passenger levels. In 2018, that was a record year for us. And of course, we had been experiencing record years every year since about 2012. But we've had a 67% growth in passenger traffic over the last 10 years. The, the terminal is, is constrained. Specifically, we're running out of places to park airplanes. That's our biggest concern during our peak periods. And if you've flown, you have felt the congestion during those peak periods where there's no place to sit once you get into the old rooms and, and those types of things. But so this next slide, there's some changes on, on this slide, but I wanted to point out where we're at on construction. Where the, the construction that's along Flewer, that you may have seen, along Flewer Drive, is actually the road, the red part of the road there, that red section was completed a year ago, and that's the new entrance. But we're extending the road now into that magenta or that dark pink area. And that is, as you can see, will eventually, when it's completed, bring the road up to the front of the, the new terminal or where the new terminal will lie. The green area is the terminal, but it has changed. Straight is cheaper to build than curved, and so this terminal will be straight. It will not be curved. And so it's, I've got a slide that kind of depicts what it will look like. And we'll go through these next ones very quickly, but this is what the entrance would look like, or does look like, I should say, with the new art that was put in there. That art was donated or put on permanent loan to us by the Greater Des Moines Art Foundation. The second slide is the extension, or what the extension of that road will look like if you stay to the right. That will take you to the new entrance of the parking garage. If you stay to the left, that would take you to the, in front of the new terminal. And then this is, if you stayed to the right, this is the curve, and that is actually the new entrance to the parking garage when you come into, into the facility, into the campus, onto the campus. In January, we hired our owner's representative team. These are the folks that, that represent us at the table when we're dealing with the myriad of engineers and architects and contractors that we, that we will be dealing with. Forty-seven people are available on this team to help us out, and our first task to them was to update the terminal programming study that was done in 2018. Terminal programming study, it's nothing more than a space analysis. How much space do we need to process passengers? The first thing they did was apply the inflation factor to the dollar amounts, and it's in the gold box there from $2,018 to $20,22. The cost of the project went up $82 million. When they inflate that on through to the 2025, which would be mid-year construction dollars, there's another $97 million of inflated costs. So that's $180 million of inflated cost on the project that, quite honestly, we did not anticipate. And that is, I know anyone is feeling this, that same inflation factor if you have construction projects. The next thing they did was update our terminal area forecast, which is a forecast of passengers coming through the airport. The old one was done in 2014, and it was short. It was very short, in fact. So they updated that terminal area forecast. And instead of needing 14 gates, now we need 17 gates right off the bat. Originally, we were to build 14. So three more gates, which is good news. That means more passengers are flying and coming through the airport. But of course, gates cost dollars as well. So then we took a look at the funding that we have and, and estimated our bonding capacity. Kind of the third impact here is that interest rates are going up, just as we're starting to look to bond. But the analysis showed that we had $224 million worth of bonding capacity. Probably read that we did receive a grant from the state of Iowa of $58.7 million. And then with the bipartisan infrastructure law on our entitlement side, on the equation side of that law, we can, we can pretty well anticipate $27 million over the next five years. Now brings us back up to regional municipalities and counties. Right now, we're at $28.6 million. It has been committed by counties and municipalities. We have 19 resolutions. And all the resolutions basically say the same thing, and that is that if we don't build the terminal, if we don't, if we can't close the funding gap, that those dollars will not be collected. And, and that is the purpose of being here in front of you, in front of you today. On the next slide, this is the straightened terminal, what, what our owners representatives came up with, and you can see they have done a number of things to try to get, reduce the cost or allow this terminal to be built. And it's kind of hard to see on the slides there, but it's broken into three, two, three phases. You have the purple, which is Phase 1A and 1B combined, and then the red is 1C. 1A is, was determined what is most important to be built. That is the primary processor. That's the ticket counters, bag belt systems, both inbound and outbound systems, screening those types of, of amenities to process the passengers would be built first, and that would allow us to get started, to get up out of the ground and, and stay in operation acceptably. But we need 17 gates to do that, and that new construction initially would only give us four or five new gates. So that red circle on this slide shows a bridge connecting to the old concourse. There's 12 gates on the old concourse. We would lose three of them. So we'd have five new ones. Keep nine of, of the existing to keep us in operation. That would keep us operational until 1B could build, be built, and that would add four more gates. So we'd have nine and nine, a total of 18. Cost to build 1A, just that primary processor is in the gold box on this next slide. It's $411 million just to build that processor. And again, the graph there shows that at 3 million total passengers, we're solidly in the red in the old, in the old passengers or the old terminal now that we don't have the capacity to handle the traffic that we have today. Working with city managers and, and a couple of county administrators, we did come up with a, a ask, a slide deck, and this is purely based on population. That's the only thing that we based it on to come up with. An ask is we're out requesting from governments, from, from the local governments for assistance on this project. We're not going to make the 34 million. We know that. Our goal now has been shortened to, to the 30 million. I will tell you, Story County and, and the communities in Story County are the last ones that, that we have approached, that we anticipate approaching. We have done Warren County, Jasper County, and County. And again, we're at a total of 19 resolutions out of those efforts.
The totals on this column are the original asks, not what they have, what has been granted.
Most all of them have granted what the original ask was, except for a couple. There's, there's several that, and, and for pretty good reason. For example, Pleasant Hill, we use 10,000 population as a cutoff, and, and you see Pleasant Hills just over 10,000. And, and below 10,000 would be a $10 per population ask. Above 10,000 would have been a $30 per population ask. So they, they accommodated us with the $10 per population. Newton reduced theirs by about half, but most of them on this list did, in fact, provide the amounts that were asked for. Des Moines and Polk County both stepped up with $10 million, and that kind of set the bar. We just literally took the population of, of Des Moines and Polk County to come up with what our ask would be.
You said Jasper did half.
Newton did half. Jasper United is completely, Jasper County did not participate at all. Polk County did, and we're still working with Dallas County. The cities of Dallas County did participate, but the county, we have another meeting with them. And I, I get the feeling that they will participate.
Newton was included in the Jasper County cities.
I'm sorry?
Newton was then included in the Jasper County.
Yeah, where it says "and cities," it's just, yeah.
So you broke down for Jasper County, which you were asking the county, and which you're asking various cities.
We did.
Did we get that for Story County?
I did, and I have it, if I could approach it. And this is what was presented at the original meeting.
Don't mean to interrupt you, but if I don't remember a question.
Sure.
Just want to ask a minute. Thank you.
So this was the breakdown that I just handed you, the breakdown for, that we presented at, at the Economic Development Meeting. And as you can see, again, it's all based on population, and we worked this a little bit backwards where, where we set Ames at $15 per capita. Nevada, Huxley, and Story City at $10 in the balance, then at, at the county level. Full disclosure, I did receive an email over the weekend or had it there this morning from Huxley, and they will not participate at this time. Huxley has, has declined to participate. We have not, and I have not approached the City Council of Ames. I have not approached any of the city councils yet.
And what, can you, I'm sorry, can you tell us again the difference between the $10 per capita and $30 per capita? What was that cutoff for population?
10,000 population.
10,000 population. So is there a reason Ames, you're asking 15 and not 30?
Distance, just purely distance. And you could, I mean, you could argue that we should be going all the way out to Marshalltown or, or all the way almost to Cedar Rapids because we're drawing passengers that far, but you have to kind of draw a boundary. So that's, that's kind of where we are. The, the, this was very beneficial when we approached both the state and the federal government. And that's part of the reason why, why we're delayed getting to Story County and the cities of Story County. Our attention got diverted to both the state of Iowa and, and federal. And but when we approached them and showed them that we had 19 resolutions committed at 28.6, that was very, very impactful at helping us receive some of the grants that we have received.
28.6.
Of the 30, currently around 28.6, yes.
And at that meeting, you were planning to look, apply for additional grants. Got any response on those?
We haven't, and I'm not going to receive a response for several more months. On, on the, and it's actually a competitive grant through, through the bipartisan infrastructure law. What I can tell you is there was $1 billion eligible this year, and, and for the next four years, it's a billion dollars. There were 650 applications totaling $14 billion of requests. While I think we are still, we have a very strong case, and I think we're still in the running. I'm not anticipating a large grant at all on, on that second grant that we were applying for. I would feel fortunate if we received a $5 billion grant from them. The bipartisan infrastructure law was, you know, going to be the savior of, of I, the bipartisan infrastructure law was, you know, going to be the savior of, of, and I don't care what infrastructure you're talking about. It, it's not, it's down payment, it's a great start, but it's just a down payment, that's all it is.
And it covers all, all kinds of, it's not just.
Right. It's roads and bridges and locks and dams and, and, you mean, so, and, and in, in all cases. It's, it's about a down payment, it's about twenty percent, so. So just wrapping up this would, we, we do plan, the monies that we have, we do plan on coming out of the ground, coming vertical. Next year, it's under design right now, if the governor signs the construction management risk bill that was passed in both houses at the state level. And anticipate she will sign it, that allows us to do construction in packages. And so we will do a thirty percent design and, and start putting the foundation in the utilities in for that one A portion of the terminal. Again, it's going to be done in phases, it was always going to be done in phases, it had to be to stay operational. It's just the phases are going to be much farther apart than what we anticipated. Happy to answer any other questions and, and. Yes.
Do you have a gate for Ames?
I don't, yet.
And, and my understanding, the total is, slide to slide, total's about five hundred and eighty-four million right now.
Well, that would be for fourteen gates, so the, the total.
Which is the escalation, the adjustments are not.
The adjustments aren't in.
So you're.
The total, if we, if we tried to build all seventeen gates right now, it's about seven hundred and eleven million dollars. And that's not in any of these slides. But that's, I mean, that's just where it is today with inflated factor and adding three more gates.
Your number right now is five hundred and eighty.
Yes, but if we just do. And if we just do one A, just the main processor, if you go forward, it's four hundred and eleven million. Just to do one A.
Then the slide after. You're showing thirty million. How is on that, and that's twenty eight point six already?
Correct.
So. What is?
We will continue to apply for. Grants as they, as they come available. Part of the reason that we are going to go ahead and come vertical discretion, there's some discretionary dollars that are available through the federal government. And if we are started, there is an obligation by the, by the FAA to help us get it completed. And, and we have sat down to talk to them and, and bottom line is there's more dollars available to us, although there's no guarantee on it. But there are more dollars available to us if we are in fact coming vertical out of ground instead, instead of just roadway. So that's part of the reason why we are hurrying, trying to get that first thirty percent package started.
She said, how many gates now?
We need seventeen.
How many do you have now?
Twelve.
Twelve, so this is just getting you two more gates.
Five more.
One A.
Oh, one A, yes, yes. Till we can get to one B. Which would get us five more, yeah. So that would put us at the, it would be nine and nine when we got all done, we'd have eighteen gates. And then we, I'm sure we'll have to take a break there, we're hoping that we could do one B, once we had funding for one A.
It forecast seventeen gates, but there's eighteen gates.
Right, right.
And then the. These estimates don't include the cost for the garage, right, is that separate from what you're trying to raise right now?
It is, and we have the funding for the garage.
Okay, so that's just not part of this.
It's just, yeah, no. Right, yeah. And it is, the garage definitely will start construction next year, it's at about sixty. We're a little further sixty percent design on the garage, it's probably at about seventy or eighty percent now.
Sorry, under a particular time frame, as you mentioned, securing that thirty percent.
We are, so, so especially like with the state dollars, that's the American Rescue Plan Act dollars and there is an absolute timeline on that money. Has to be committed by December of twenty twenty-three, has to be spent by. Well, and the state's timeline is June, we have to submit for reimbursement on by June of twenty twenty-six. So that's, yes, that's the timeline we're buttoning up against, and we do have our own. Airports were also issued some American Rescue Plan Act dollars, and so we're under those same timelines with some dollars that we were awarded. So as we sit today, we're at about a hundred and ten million dollars. Short in, or working to close that. And that is just to complete one A, the four hundred and eleven million minus the three hundred and, and thirty million that we have. Three thirty-nine that we have, but when I, when I take the garage out of there, on that three thirty-nine, then we're. We're at about a hundred to a hundred and ten million dollars, the gap that we're trying to fill. And again, we will take all of these resolutions every time we go to DC. Or anytime that we're visiting with the state and remind them.
Too many ways, too many ways for calculating, so I'm now confused. Four hundred and eleven million minus three hundred and thirty-nine.
The garage is in that three thirty-nine, we have to fund the garage out of that three thirty-nine.
Garage.
It's estimated to be fifty million.
Yeah, because the garage was, we were still trying to fund the garage.
And we, we do have it funded, and, and I would prefer. To take that money for the garage and put it into the terminal. I know I can finish the garage, I'm not yet convinced that I'm going to get that thirty percent package out of the ground on the terminal. And that's a fifty million dollar risk, I'm just not willing to take. And garage actually pays for itself, the garage will, and we can bond against those revenues, so parking pays for itself. So this, I mean, it's a very involved plan on the financing with a lot of unknown shit, but it does help. If we can take resolutions with us again and show them. Whoever we're talking to at the state, I will tell you, it's pretty, it's pretty uncommon for this amount of money to be. Committed for a project at an airport like this, I do have colleagues calling wanting to know how we did it. And the bottom line is, the economic impact to the, to all of Central Island, for that matter, all of Iowa. It's a pretty easy sell. In two thousand and fourteen, we did an economic impact study, it was six hundred and forty-four million dollar impact that the airport had on the state of Iowa. The Iowa DOT is currently doing an update to their plan, which will include another, another impact study. Economic impact study of all the commercial service airports, and so I'm waiting to see what that number is for them to get to.
Were you planning to talk to Iowa State?
Down at this, they're, they're more of a, we're not private, but. We're going to try to stay with the cities and counties if, if we can, I mean, certainly we have a lot of. Impact on, on Iowa State, but not at this time, there, there has been some, if we were to go to the private sector. Then we would.
Percentage Dallas County?
We have, and they've asked us to meet basically one-on-one with them. And I've done one of those meetings so far and had a very good conversation. With that supervisor, very much in, in favor of contributing. But I haven't talked to them to that, so.
Who else besides Dallas County that haven't turned back?
Uh, counties, just Dallas and Story on, on.
Back to all your states.
We, we have, because I haven't presented to all the cities yet, I still need to get in front of the city councils of, of Ames, Story City, again, Huxley. Yes, the only one who completely has, has declined of the cities is Elkhart, Elkhart. Even the little community of Almond, just north of Ankeny, four hundred and fifty people. They committed forty-five hundred dollars, which, the reason I bring that up to their budget, forty-five hundred dollars is a huge impact with that small community. I, that one just.
So what was your forming, so to speak, of coming up with the?
Took the cities first and applied the dollar amount to those cities and, and the balance just went to Story County.
You decided that Story County and City should be two million.
That's based, that's based on population, that's based on population, yeah. And then we just did the math, because there's certainly more cities in Story County than the four that we've listed here, we just took the four largest ones.
Trying to back end of.
Yeah, yes. And all of the ask were based on population. Now, the per capita ask was a little bit different, depending on how the population was. The, the city of Des Moines was, was almost fifty dollars per capita, that's the only one that was at fifty dollars per capita. I mean, because it is Des Moines Airport Authority, so. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Next, we have a discussion and update with ISG.
Morning, how are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good. Thank you for having me, appreciate the time. Reason I had reached out to have this conversation is I saw in the paper that you met with another firm recently to discuss county inspection. So I was just hoping to get a little background as to why you would be considering that, considering you signed letters of intent with ISG. And, and happy to answer any questions on concerns you may have with our inspection. But just trying to make sure that you recognize how important of a county this is for us and our responsibility to you, we take very seriously. So if there's any concerns that you have with us, I want, I wanted to address those and hopefully keep you from, from making a different decision. So I guess if I could ask you for a little background on that, this is more of a conversation than any kind of presentation.
I mean, I, I would say for myself, just, we need to make sure that we're. Doing our due diligence and. Whatever firm we ultimately hire, we need to know that we've explored all of the options and that we're making the right decision. For our residents.
Okay.
Yeah, I think for myself, just having them on, I was unfamiliar with them, and so just kind of hearing them out. That, that was my.
Okay. Is, is there anything that we have done that would trigger a lack of faith in our ability to do this work for you?
Yeah, I don't think, there's not anything that we've done thus far.
Okay.
Just exploring our. Options, but.
Think back in the DAPL days, I think there were some comments or some concerns, everybody wasn't always happy with county inspection. I'm not really familiar with all of those complaints, I do understand that everybody's not always going to be happy. With something like that, that, you know, maybe the outcome isn't what they wanted, so some landowners weren't happy. I don't know that that's anybody's fault, I don't know if it is, and I don't know if it isn't. I was the one who suggested we talk with Snyder because I have been following the IUB. Filings, and I noticed that a lot of counties around here were signing up with Snyder. At the time, I think that we issued the, the, we signed up the letter of intent and presented with us, I wasn't there at that meeting, for one thing. But I think there was only one other firm that had even been suggested to us, and they did not, I don't think they were in the running at all. But, so it was later on, it was after the board decided to sign the letter of content with you. That, and to your firm, that, and started showing up, and there was another firm there and large counties in our central Iowa utilizing it. So I guess I thought it made sense to talk with them.
Yeah.
To see what they had to offer.
That's understandable, um. You brought up DAPL, so I would just like to address that somewhat, so that was the first large project that went through the state. Utilizing the county inspection rules that the IUB and the county or in the state legislature put in, I believe in ninety-eight. We performed county inspection for thirteen of the eighteen counties on that, and there was, there were plenty of holes in the rules there. It was fairly opaque, and so the county inspectors were. Sort of interpreting those rules and we're trying to apply them as conservatively as possible for the landowner's benefit there. Following the closing of DAPL, IUB reached out to us to ask for our input into revising those rules and regulations. And since that time, we have submitted a pretty robust revision to the IUB that was approved and accepted. And that is what all county inspectors across the state will be using going forward. On top of that, Supervisor Merkin, I'm assuming that conditions, or, or construction during wet conditions is something you've probably heard. That's been an issue that had come across the board, there was very little guidance to that in DAPL. The revised. Regulations still had some, some, some holes or a lack of specificity with that moving forward. So about three weeks ago, we submitted to the docket for both the summit line and the navigator line. Further restrictions on wet condition construction to limit it to rutting of up to twelve inches in the ground. Which you can agree or disagree with that, but it gives a quantifiable. Quantifiable condition that we can inspect to, which is what we are trying to do. It, it takes the subjectivity out of the inspection and gives us something that we can say to the contractor, you cannot work there, you're rutting more than twelve inches.
You could do that anyway.
You can't do that because there's no specificity to it, so where the, where the top soil is stripped. All it says is that concerns for subsoil drainage, where, where concerns. Where, where concerns for subsoil drainage exists, then you can shut down. Time and time again, on Dakota Access, we would issue our warning to them for wet conditions where top soil was stripped. And they would say, prove to us that we're damaging drain tile. Well, you can't prove that without ripping up the ground further to expose the drain tile and see that they fix it. So again, no specificity. We're trying to figure out how to do this. In the meantime, construction is going through. So that is where the lack of guidance from the rules and regulations that the legislature put out leaves the inspector out in the field trying to say. How do we get this stopped? So there were conditions where we did stop it, where top soil is there, that's very easy because you have mixing of topsoil and subsoils. That's very clear in the rules that you can't do that. Once that's stripped, it was open to interpretation to some degree. And we weren't particularly successful in getting it stopped in all locations on that. I, I would argue that nobody would be.
But it's my understanding that, that those rules have been changed since then. Because if the county inspector comes in and says, stop, it doesn't, it stops.
The base, based on, based on what, though? So if, if you're the contractor, and you have a county inspector saying, stop. What is that county inspector using as his, as his defense for causing the construction to stop? You, you have rules and regulations in place there, and where there isn't strong guidance in that. You have subjectivity of the contractor, you have subjectivity of the inspector. And the inspector isn't taking keys away, the inspector isn't taking machinery away. It's, there's has to be a respect for the position there that they're going to stop. I don't care who's in the inspection role. It's just, it's, it's a verbal stop, that's all we have at our disposal. Unless you get the counties involved and the I U B involved, which is all an option, but that all takes time. And meanwhile, the construction efforts are going through. And so what we are trying to do is put into place a clear set of guidance that the county inspector can point to. So that we don't have to go through the timely nature of getting the board involved, getting the I U B involved. To get them to stop in that location.
You, you say that. I reached out to you for comment on, who else did they reach out to after DAPL experience?
There was only two other firms that did this. There was a firm up in the Southwest and there was a firm down in the Southeast. Whether or not they reached out to them, I can't, I can't tell you, but. Thirteen of the eighteen counties went with us. Perhaps it's a subjective comment, but I think we have hands down the most robust inspection firm. Yeah, in Iowa, this is unique to Iowa, this doesn't exist anywhere else. So you're not pulling in inspection firms from Illinois or Oklahoma or Pennsylvania that do this. Iowa's the only state that has this. So I think the I U B looked at it and said, you guys have the most experience with this in the state of Iowa with these rules and regulations. What are we missing? And so we helped them revise their rules and regulations. And we have things in now for soil stabilization, we have things in for de-watering, we have things in for. Crossings of the drain tile. We had an item in for getting the drain tiles scoped and tel, or scoped and encamered prior to restoration. That got taken out. But it's all the things that as we were working in the field, where we had challenges because the rules weren't clear enough, we tried to get those in. Like I said, construction during wet conditions, wet conditions is a very. I, I, it's an undefinable term when it comes to this. So what we're trying to do is give it. Again, but standing water in and of itself. With construction doesn't necessarily impact. The ground in a way that the contractor is going to say, oh, it's, it's in the rules. All we're trying to do is build more robust nature to the rules and regulations. So the county inspector, whether you use ISG or firm B, C, or D, has rules that they can follow for the benefit of the land. That's a hundred percent of what our role and responsibility is out there.
Additional, that addition that you submitted to mix about.
It, it's not, it's not a, it's not through their rules and regulations committee. It is on the docket and they are going to try to figure out if they can make the pipelines adhere to that. Now, I sent it to each and every county requesting their support of it. A number of counties have issued their support for it, I don't believe Story County has. It would have gone through the auditors, is who our communication is through. Po- point being is that as a firm, we are experienced enough to continue to try to push these regulations for the benefit of the land and the landowner. I think that there's value in that, I think it shows a level of understanding and sophistication about this. Type of project that really only experience brings. And that experience doesn't exist for the vast number of people that will come up here and sit before you. Because like I said, there's only been three, two, there was three inspection firms that, that did it before. It's not to say you can't gain experience by all means. But if you want to have Story County be a testing ground for, for new inspection, then that's, that's the direction you would go with that. Do you have a timeframe as to what you're thinking, just as we're preparing? Because the, the reason that I was here as early as I, as I was is because to go from having no pipelines in the state. To having twenty nine counties, having pipelines going through. It takes, it takes some time to get your inspection staff up to, up to speed, built out. And, you know, that, that's why we were here so early, so that we could prepare for this type of thing. If that's going to change, I would like to know sooner, I understand you guys have a, a schedule of your own. But the sooner that could be kind of finalized, we're going to have contracts sent before too long. Letter of, letter of intent, obviously it's not a contract, you're free to do whatever you want to at this point. But we will follow up with contracts here before too long.
Get it, we'll have to get it back on the agenda. When do you, when do you expect to start sending out contracts?
Oh, probably so Q three or Q four of twenty twenty three is when construction is set to start on this project. It's been delayed through the I U B process. So I think originally it was Q one of twenty three, and now it's pushed back six to nine months. That buys some time. The one thing that we're trying to get established is. The public meetings that were held in each county, those are for the pipeline, it's for the I U B really to check a box. It doesn't answer hardly any questions for landowners. Ms. Merkin, I think you were there, I don't, I imagine you didn't feel like it answered everything that you needed it to. Okay, you're, you're all there, so I, that, you know, landowners don't really care about how the pipe's made. They don't really care about what the material is, what the pressures, some do, but really what they want to know is, who's going to be in my field watching this project go through to make sure that my land is as productive. Two, three years from now as it was before, and that's what our role is. So I've, again, submitted a request that a similar meeting be held in each county, but. Put on by the counties with the county inspector there to answer questions so that you guys can point to and say, hey, this is who we've hired to be your representative out in the field. This is what the rule, there, this is what their guidelines are, this is what you can expect. I was in Boone County recently for a Dakota Access question with a landowner who was having issues with his drain tile. And he had no idea that the county inspector role existed. He had questions about the size and location and the material of his drain tile. And he thought those answers didn't exist. Well, we gave him twenty seven reports for the drain tile across his property, and he was astounded by it. It answered all the questions that he had and helped him get a solution to his problem. Those are the kind of things that the landowners need to know.
Pipeline companies certainly are helping because they're resisting allowing even the counties to get the list. I've asked for the list, you know, and, and I've been told by the I U B, it's our responsibility to help the residents, make sure they have the information. So I, I, I say whenever we talk about this, and I know you're not the I U B or you're not the pipeline. But, you know, counties need to get those lists.
Absolutely.
You know, we spent a lot of time trying to put together a list, and honestly, we said, we don't know if this is right or not, we don't know if something's going to change. So we just, you know, consternment saying we need that list.
Yep.
So, um.
Well, and with, oh, sorry. I was going to say, with, with that, we're, we're trying to set a precedent so that it becomes a requirement as part of these projects as well. So that it is the counties having some control over the messaging going out to that as well. Because your landowners are as, as in the dark as you guys are, and it's unfortunate. And I don't know how to address it any other way than communicating what is available to them.
I think you just clarified something for me. You said construction starts the fourth quarter of twenty twenty calendar, twenty twenty three, is that what you're saying?
That's, that's the last I've been told, that's assuming a permit gets issued.
So, so what happened? Because I, I heard that last, I will press last Friday, Jack Whitaker was saying it would be a year before any of the construction started. And I was surprised because I thought Summit was ahead of Navigator by a ways, what did the I U B do?
They are, they are ahead. Navigator submitted their proposal for a permit, a request for a permit. Four or five months after Summit, so Summit is further ahead in the process. Those, I mean, those projects are very dissimilar, other than the, other than the product going through it, they're in different geographies, they're in different locations. So I, I can't, I can speak more to Summit because I've had more conversations about it than I can Navigator. But I believe Navigator's always been about twelve months behind Summit. Not this year, that was their intent. They wanted to, they wanted to get the permit approval. Prior to Q one of twenty three, so that as soon as March hit, they could, they could go. That's not going to happen, it sounds like. Well, I really appreciate your time, I know you're probably tired of hearing about the pipeline already, but.
Yeah.
But, yeah, absolutely. So if you have any questions, please reach out, we, like I said, I, my goal here was to really. Hopefully convince you that you guys made the right choice the first time. I get that you have a, a, a duty to your landowners to make sure you have the right choice in place. I feel like you have that right now, I hope you don't make a different decision. But if you do, there are better rules and regulations in place for whoever you put out in that field. Because ISG in large part, so thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. And sorry, if you could offer your support to the docket for the wet conditions, I think that that is a big step. It's all in the email, I can resend it to Lucy, I believe is your author. And we are working with. Iowa State, they had a, through DAPL, they had a test plot to see what impacts to. Yield would come from the project goes through. I reached out to their professor that was leading them, had a conversation with him last week. We're going to meet with them to see if we need to further refine the twelve inches to reduce it. The twelve inches for us, just, sorry, I don't, I don't mean to get too technical, but there's a, there's a requirement to. Decomact the subsoils before putting the top soil on, eighteen inches. So we looked at that and said, okay, if you have rutting of twelve inches, that eighteen inches, in theory, can take care of the ruts. And an extended impact to the subsoil. So that's where we came up with the twelve inch number, it's not based off science, it's not based off of an understanding of soils, it's based off purely on, we need something. We think this is better than nothing, we think that this can get approved, given the fact that it's not, it's not within the rules right now. It's going to have to be a, an add-on to their permit. And we're happy to take any suggestions that people with more understanding of that have. Because Iowa soils are, are unique, Iowa State is a great resource that we have. And we'll have more conversations with them to try to get a better understanding. They, they did, yeah, i- it's not a, it's not a, it's not a zero impact. Project by any means. I think that it, four to five years, it's looking like you start to come out of it. But again, that, that's not my realm, I don't. I don't do any of those studies, I don't know how to necessarily interpret them, we're there to make sure the rules get followed. Thank you.
Okay, next we have agency reports. University Community Childcare Annual Report, we still have Stacy.
Morning.
Thanks for hanging in there with us.
No, you're fine, good morning.
Are there any specific highlights you would like to touch on in your report this morning?
I think we're just really glad that we're getting back to a closer to full enrollment. Able to do the enrolling as long as we have staffing in place. And so that's still our biggest challenge right now. I know I probably reported the same thing out to you last year, that staffing was a challenge. I think it's probably even more impactful this year than it had been then. One of the staffing issues we're running into this year is that we are trying to bring back some of our assistant teachers. And so those are generally our part-time Iowa State students. And get them back in the classrooms to really take some of those responsibilities back from the teachers that we were asking them to cover during that whole COVID. Situation. And so with them coming back, we had had five, six, seven, eight, and now we're hoping to get back to that twenty five or thirty we'd had in the past. I know for this summer, we're happy to have the eight that we do have because they can work more hours. Once we get back to the semester, then they cut back to that ten or twelve hours a week around their general Iowa State class schedules. Still looking to hire some full-time staff. We did have some luck and have had two recent hires. The other side of that, though, is that those recent hires are filling positions that have been vacated. So husbands who graduated from Iowa State, families moving on to other locations. And so while we are making progress in hiring, it's not necessarily making progress to opening that newly constructed infant classroom that sits empty still.
Stacy, with the tracking staffing, so on your report, do you currently then have twenty four permanent staff, or is that the goal that you want to be at?
Twenty four is the goal, we're at seventeen.
And I think that you wanted twenty five to thirty part-time or assistant teachers, and you've got eight at this particular time?
Yeah, summers are always lower than that twenty five or thirty, just because all, a lot of our staff are students and they go home for the summer. So I think eight, nine, ten is probably pretty average for a summer, because then they can work closer to a full-time schedule. That twenty five or thirty is generally those assistants who are working ten to twelve hours each week during the semester.
Thank you. I, I don't have any questions. I just want to comment on how nice it is to see. The diversity in your funding sources.
And that is a big benefit for our clientele as well. A lot of our families do benefit from the asset funding that comes in. And they also are able to benefit from the boost preschool scholarship. And that really does help because our families always are saying, thank you so much for that funding, but it's still a lot to pay out. With children.
I don't have any questions, it's a very thorough report, thank you very much for giving us all the information.
Thank you.
Consideration of minutes?
I had meetings this morning and I didn't have a chance to review them, I don't mind if you go ahead, but I don't feel like picking the motion or second, just because I have, didn't have time.
Sure, I read them this morning, so I would number approval of the May tenth, the team for twenty four minutes, I read them also, I would second that. Consideration of personnel actions.
And with approval of personnel actions as presented, second.
Looked and seconded, working.
Fine.
And I, I, I. Consent agenda?
I approve of consent agenda items listed, second.
Second. We've been seconded. Public hearing items. We have consideration of Resolution 22-90 FY22 hundred amendment.
Good morning. Good morning. Wow, that weekend went fast, didn't it? No kidding. The proposed amendment that I'm, that you have in front of you was published on 5/19/22 in all three newspapers as required by law. Overall, the revenues are being increased by 1.1%, which is 667.7 from the August 2021 amended budget. Expenses are decreasing by 0.91%, which is 571,000 from the August of 2021 amended budget. In this amendment, the big-ticket items are secondary roads, 685,000, mental health regional payment, where I'm increasing by 439.08. We adjusted employees' insurance in most departments and moved the generator project from current fiscal year to next fiscal year, which is where it's budgeted for next fiscal year, but we needed to amend it out of this year. The unassigned general supplemental ending fund balance is gonna be about 40%, a little over 40%. For the rural, it's gonna be a little over 38%. For secondary roads, it's gonna be about 55%. Overall, we're gonna have an ending fund balance of all funds of 26.8 million of this amount, 12.9 restricted funds, 674,247 is committed, and 3.7 is assigned with 9.4 million on the side. You have all the documentation, I assume, still from the, when I said, let's send it to publication, but I'm more than willing to review that if you have any other questions or want me to.
So the amount of funding, that's the best, yes, estimate for end of year for what you'd be then paying, allocating over to the region?
So I just, I'm processing the claim right now for June payment to the region. Bessie Sturzner, the, the financial person for the region, did some suppositions. This is what her expected expenses, no, this is what every, well, actually, all the counties needed to submit their expected expenses for the month of June, and then she did a, here's what the ending fund balance was in April, here's what our expected expenses are. She didn't take revenues into account at all. Pretty much most of the revenues are in. It's just gonna be trickling right now. So all that told, she determined an amount to send out to all the, or all the counties. Ours is 1.88, I think, something to that effect. And then we're all asked to do a handwritten at, on June 30th for the remaining balance. The Treasurers apparently just got wind of this.
Oh, surprise.
So they've been all talking on, on their pages about, oh, my gosh, what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? Which is what I was asking back in January and have asked the state. I forwarded all that information again to Artie and Ted and said, you know, this is the response I got, which was nothing. This isn't how things work, but this is what we're gonna do. So Artie and I, at this point in time, are talking about her doing an apportionment on June 30th or June 30th, which would not typically be done. That would be done the day after. So that we can see what the balance is and then stay, and her and I stay late and, and do that revenue, so we can see what the balance can be in under the remaining balance. How the, how any collections are gonna be handled after the end of the fiscal year, I'm not sure. That's what the Treasurers are still trying to work out. FYI, last year, that amount was $76.29 that was collected in July and August for delinquent taxes. So it's not as though it's a large amount of money. It's still just kind of, we're doing the best we can to figure out what we're gonna do.
Yeah, we talked about it some at our regional meeting.
Regional meeting.
And stuff, and Bessie said that she was trying to make some calculations.
Yeah, and, and my, I, my calculations and her calculations were really close, so I, I'm really confident in what she was trying to accomplish, so. I don't know either at this point in time what the last how the employment situation is gonna, wh- when that's gonna actually transpire. Because I don't know if they're moving them effective July 1st, so we're gonna pay them for nine days. Because our pay periods are falling. I, I, I know Alyssa's kind of been working on that a little bit with the, with the, with Franklin County HR. I'm, I'm not sure how that's gonna fall, but that will affect what we pay out of the health fund also. So. Right, right. And I don't know, if we can't, well, we, we did budget money in another fund to pay them. So if that's the way we need to do it and split the payment out, we, we can certainly do that and pay them in July, and it wouldn't be out of
Right, so then at the end of July, is the money that's in that line gets sent in a June? Well, no, if it's there to pay them in July, does that money then get sent to the region at the end of July?
No, we can't, we can't pay anything out of the mental health fund after June. The non-mental health?
Yeah.
Well, well, that, yes, that would, we would have to send the money to Franklin County so that they could put it in their funds to pay it. And that's how I started that fund, was by the region giving the counties dollars to start the next year for the very situation of, well, we need to make sure the transition all works to move the money around. But yes, you're right. Then, then they will, Franklin County will bill the counties for those dollars that they would have fronted. That's my understanding. Details to work out still, you know, I think we're working through them.
All this work that everybody's having to do, I should hope that results in better mental health services. But I don't know if that's what it's about.
Well, challenges, they're dictated by the requirements of state and what they define.
Have I shared with you guys that in 1995, I was just start, I started in 95 and 97 was the first year that the state dumped it, or put it back to the counties? And now I've seen a full cycle, just, I've been here a long time, apparently. Kind of makes me feel. So yeah, that worked so well that time that I'm just sure it'll work really good this time again.
Are we ready to open? Hearing on Resolution 22-90. Non will close the public hearing.
Resolution 22-90.
Next, we have first consideration of ordinance, 304, amending chapter 85.8 definitions, chapter 91, exception to conformational uses, chapter 92, administration, and chapter 93, planning development, infractions, historic and land development regulations.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, try to keep the PowerPoint shorter than the title. This is our work program. We're amending every chapter of our code. Got two left after this, conditional uses and subdivisions, which we're working on. The most changes in these ordinances and why they're grouped together are just clarifications. I pushed the trigger for too long. Oh, my gosh. Okay, so for instance, in definitions, we went through and did control find on every single definition in that chapter, and if it wasn't used in the code, we struck it. And conversely, we looked for words in the code that were used that were undefined. So that's mostly what you see in the definition section. There are a few problematic definitions in terms of enforcement or other planning trends that we also made some edits to. For instance, defining family based on who's related to whom, that kind of thing. Chapter 91 is about exceptions to our code and non-conforming uses. Exceptions, we add it that if a structure, for instance, a ramp is to help make a building accessible, but that should be allowed. We have run into that issue where it doesn't meet setbacks. And there's a giant process to get a variance, and it might not be successful at the end. So we felt that this was a good addition. And then we also added an exception for accessory structures that are under 100 square feet, because we don't require permits for those. And how can we enforce setbacks when we don't even require a permit? And then non-conforming uses, I know we've got some comments on this one. So we added additional time allowances for repair of a non-conforming use or allowances for vacancies of non-conforming uses. So that if, if a structure is vacant, or a use is discontinued, or a structure is destroyed under the ordinance that can't be rebuilt, or it has to come into conformance. And so we, the current ordinance allowed six months for construction. And so now we've rewritten it to allow six months to get the permit, and then the normal construction timeframe that we give for anyone else getting a permit. We did look at other ordinances and other places, and theirs was typically a year to get that all completed. So we felt that ours was pretty, pretty conservative. We also just did a general cleanup of the section because there was some confusion about how to apply to provisions on conforming land and non-conforming structures. And then we had one where they were in combination, and it just makes sense to keep them separate and apply them separately. And then Ethan did offer some edits that you see in this section as well, which were helpful. Oh, my gosh. Has a mind of its own. 92 is about administration. So this is processes for getting a permit or going through a rezoning. The main change here that I wanted to discuss is staff would like to suggest a change where if we get a rezoning request in, and it does not conform with our comprehensive plan, we go through the comprehensive plan amendment process first before we hear the rezoning. Planning and zoning commission didn't support that change because it would, because it would add a month to the process. But from staff's perspective, we often put a lot of emphasis on the rezoning because the rezoning is where we can apply conditions to how something actually develops, and it requires a lot of attention. And we would like to pay that level of attention to amending our comprehensive plan in the first place.
What was it written in here, the way that staff wanted it?
Yes. The ordinance on your agenda is as presented by staff. So it's, you'd go through a C2C plan amendment process, yeah, first.
Looking for it.
Yes, it's 92 oh, eight, page 56. I, I think most rezonings we see involve a C2C plan amendment. From a planning perspective, that's kind of a red flag. Why, why do we keep amending our comprehensive plan to allow development that otherwise wouldn't be supported by the comprehensive plan? And so this is kind of us taking a step back and saying, how can we clean up that process?
Clarifying question. If, if if many of the requests are requiring amendment of the C2C plan, do we, maybe we need to revise our C2C?
Yeah, and I think that's mainly because the C2C plan doesn't show a lot of rural residential development. And so when we get farmland proposed to be developed into rural residential lots on the C2C plan, it's shown as agricultural preservation area. So yes, we could revisit the plan, but that's typically what we see.
Is that, is that bottom horizon?
Yeah. Yep, so we, I think Leanne typically did the annual review, and I think we are gonna do a five-year review, or do for it, a more comprehensive review, and maybe incorporating, you know, the housing study, you know, comprehensive plans that our cities have adopted, that kind of thing, next year.
Next year.
I thought, I felt like we talked about it, but I wasn't really sure.
Because I think we built in, and if Leanne's on, she can, she can correct me, five-year reviews, but I think we're a little bit behind with the pandemic. So I think that's getting, that's something our department will take on next year. And then we did end up striking a new section. It was for special exceptions. We don't need to talk about it. And then that section about conforming with the C2C plan, all permits must conform. I really appreciated Ethan's help on this. The special exception section was in response to a Supreme Court case. And I interpreted it differently than Ethan, so we came up with this special exception section, and Ethan said, hold on, that's more problematic. So that's why you see it struck, and it's not in your ordinance in front of you. So thanks for sending that back, so we can work through that with, with county attorney staff. And then the only other thing, before we go into recommendations, I wanted to address is, you know, I know there's changes to the non-conforming uses chapter. Just to clarify, future land use plans don't make non-conformant uses. Changes to the ordinance make non-conformant uses. Future land use plans cannot create non-conforming uses. Changes to the ordinance, the actual zoning code, create non-conforming uses. So for instance, in the current fringe plan, there's an actual provision that, that if a property is zoned in a way that is not compatible with the designation on the fringe plan, that does not make it non-conforming. That's why we see with the proposed fringe plan, a need to amend the actual code to change the options for conditional uses. You know, the fringe plan can't affect county zoning, or, and neither can the C2C plan, right? So for instance, if the C2C plan shows that, you know, we should be looking at making Fernald commercial, which doesn't, I don't want anyone to think that it does, that doesn't change, that's not going to cause our non-conforming use provisions to now apply to Fernald. We'd actually have to go through a rezoning process, change their zoning to commercial, and then they'd be considered non-conforming. So I just, for clarification.
Can you also talk to me on 92.6, that's probably where I've heard the most over the weekend?
Okay.
The concern with the language that it says, you know, including plans that are adopted by controlling the C2C plan, including but not limited to the age of the fringe plan.
Yep.
So there is concern that instead of even in there, and for similar process of having these listening meetings that we're kind of putting the force to the part in some assumptions or decisions with that being there.
Okay, so what future land use plans do help with is guiding decisions on proposed uses, right? So that provision, that rezoning provision is when somebody comes in and wants to do a rural residential development, it's a new use, right? We look at those rezoning standards, including, does this match with our C2C plan designation? You know, when staff started working on this ordinance amendment in 2020, that was something that we wanted to add. It's, we could amend the language if the supervisors want it to be more general. You know, Huxley's also interested in doing the names. You know, Huxley's also interested in doing the names of, I'm sorry, in a fringe plan. I've even heard from Roland that they're interested in doing a fringe plan. This isn't changing how the zoning code is applied at all. It's just creating a level of transparency. I do find a lot of the time when we get requests in for rezonings in the fringe area, sometimes folks come back and say, well, this says the C2C plan has to be compatible with my rezoning request. And then I have to explain that, well, the fringe plan is an adopted component. So it's not changing the process. I just, I think we added it in to create more transparency and less issues for staff.
I get that. I get that. I get what you're trying to do. You know, I just know the difference. There's a big perception out there hearing from the meetings, the two meetings that's afar. And like I said, I've been contacted by a couple folks, which is that particular language and just you put up some bright players.
Sure.
Whether, whether it meant to or not, the understanding of it, whether it meant to or not.
Yeah. Yeah.
The way I look at it is we're not going to adopt any rezoning that is consistent with any plan that we're party to.
Inconsistent.
It's inconsistent with, yes.
Right.
I mean, we.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether it says the A's urban fringe plan in there or not, if you're a cooperator of the A's urban fringe plan, we're going to make sure that our rezonings are consistent with that.
And I, and I guess that's, yeah, I'm sorry to be correct.
Yeah, if we were to take that out, that doesn't mean we would operate any different.
No.
But well, it's just that kind of noticed it was, wasn't there and thought it was important.
Yeah. And again, I think if you wanted to make it broader, you could just reference fringe lands or intergovernmental land use agreements. But if you take it out, it won't change how things operate either. It was just part of this whole, how can we make the code clearer goal with this work program.
Sure. I, I understand what you're trying to do.
Yeah.
I think that's why it wasn't there before.
Okay.
We're having these meetings right now regarding the fringe plan, separate from this totally understanding that that the perception or makes the assumption that something's being driven through.
Yeah.
And that's.
Yeah.
I don't believe it's the intent.
No. And yeah, I haven't received any of those comments, but I'd be happy to take a look and so, yeah.
Some of them were separately from that meeting that I attended.
Okay.
Well, since there, you know, maybe the thing that makes sense, since there may be other fringe plans and there are other agreements that might also adopt, also impact what you're doing here. What if we just took out the words included but not limited to the A's urban fringe plan and left it as including any plans that are adopted as components of the C2C plan?
That's fine. And that's, yeah, that'd be fine. I'm trying to think. Because the watershed studies adopted component. I think. And so is the strategic plan.
Right.
So we might want to clarify land use.
Are you forgetting any land use plans?
Yes.
That are adopted as components of the C2C plan?
Yep.
That block enough that?
Yeah.
And then we could on, on the website have a link to any of those.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that it's.
Clear what they are.
What they are.
Yeah.
Would provide some of that transparency.
Yeah, I think one of our goals with the website refresh is to just create a, a future land use plan page where you can find C2C and any other ones. Yeah.
One question I have, and it's back on your slide. It just comes with kind of person versus language and it might be because that's language that's in state code or I code that you referenced, um, handicapped persons. Is that from like state code?
No, I think that was from other, we looked at how other counties handled that exception and that language was from other counties' codes.
Gotcha. Gotcha. I've just seen handicap is an old term to use and usually it's utilized like a person with a disability.
Okay. We could, happy to update that language too with something more appropriate. I think that definitely would fit with the goal of this amendment.
If you'd like to make comments, feel free to come forward to the table. Okay. And then we'll, we'll follow up with the chat after. If you could speak on it again, please.
We'll do. Brad Perkins, 550240 Street, Ames, Iowa. Maybe I need to bring my own name plaque. I'm just kidding. I've been talking so much. And I, I just want to address where I wholeheartedly agree with what Amelia said that the fringe plan is not a change in code, but I would like to point out. When we applied for our permits, and this was not Amelia, this was her predecessor. Her predecessor told me two things. One, I could not or should not attempt to apply to get a permit for my business because my business would not be in accordance with the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. And then if I wanted to apply, I should get a change to the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, which is why we originally spoke with the city of Ames and why the city of Ames originally told us, we don't want your business there anyway. So I went ahead with my application. Obviously our application was successful. And I wholeheartedly believe Amelia when she says, okay, this, this is not changing code. This is my concern is that it has been presented to me differently in this building.
That provision was struck.
I mean, no, no, no. What I'm saying is years ago, years ago, before you were in your position, your predecessor told me point blank. Yes, right. Sure. But it wasn't Amelia. I don't even know if she knew the whole conversation was happening. But he frankly told me, don't apply because if because he didn't think it would be successful. All right, so I agree. Fringe plan is not a modification and should not be a modification. However, my concern is, is that in the past, it has been used as a de facto way of modifying the code for someone that interprets it that way. And that's all my concern is, is if we can all, you know, agree that these aren't code changes and that it's never going to be used as a code change and something like a conditional use permit, which isn't dividing land and it's not rezoning. If we could all agree that that stays within the purview of planning and zoning committee and the board of adjustment, that would be, that would be fantastic. And that's my.
Did you want me to just read it? Yeah. P and D should set up a schedule later this summer to start the five-year review in calendar year 2023. Was delayed due to the pandemic and waiting on 2020 census results. I will be bringing the delayed annual review forward to the board of supervisors this summer.
Thanks, Leanne.
Thank you, Leanne.
That's for the C2C plan update.
Was there, was there a second one or was that all one?
Was there something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. We have standards for rezonings. We have standards for conditional use permits. Those really aren't being altered in how they're applied with this ordinance. We still have a standard for conditional use permits. Section isn't even printed off or on the agenda center because there were no changes to it that states shall conform, something along those lines to the C2C plan. Does that make sense? Okay.
Anyone else who'd like to make public comment? Start six, actually. I get mixed up every time. Yeah.
Okay.
See, no one will close. I guess again, I, you know, I sort of like the idea of making that land use plans broadest and specifically saying A's urban fringe. Just think it's like that, not included this much during time until after all the meetings were taken, but I think this broad, broadened it out, but not specific to one particular plan and it still allows us time, the problem are the one less meeting that we have and any potential changes. I'm assuming then that they're, based on that, there may be other things that they'll have to bring back to that may be changed as well.
In the code or in the? In the fringe plan?
Yeah.
Draft? Yeah. So I think after meetings, we're compiling all the comments and then I'll bring them all back to you with. You'll get them all as a giant appendix to a staff report and then we'll summarize them as well with recommendations on changes to make and to get directions.
So I guess my question is based on that though, will the potentially be other changes in our ordinance that also need to be?
After, so then?
After, after.
Yes.
Just looking at the process.
Yes. So after the, you get comments, make changes, bring a final version back. Cooperators will take action on it. Then there's a strategy section. And then that could include code amendments. It could include other things. And so then we'll start incorporating those strategies as part of our work program to take on any code amendments, other changes that are needed. Yeah.
But you don't imagine there will be significant changes to what you presented today.
I guess, are we talking with the code? The code.
I think, I think that's what, yes.
Okay, no. Okay.
If there are other changes.
Oh.
Here.
No, I, I, right now. Sorry. So right now, the only code change that would be a strategy and fringe plan is in chapter 87 and chapter 90, which are the two remaining chapters in my code to amend. Subdivisions and conditional use permits. And that's because there's two draft strategies, ones related to coming up with better conservation design and subdivision citing guidelines. And one, it would be related to reviewing what conditional use permits are, aren't compatible with different fringe plan designations or also C2C plan designations. So urban growth areas for other cities as well. So those, yeah, would, would be after plan adoption. Absolutely. Yeah.
Do you plan, when, when you bring back the urban fringe?
Yes.
Is it possible for you to identify those things that might need to change in our code before we move on? Fringe plan?
Um. Like drafts, like code amendment drafts?
I mean, if, if, if the fringe plan is going to necessitate a change later, can we know that before?
Yeah.
Make a decision?
Yep.
Because I don't want to, I don't, I don't want us to do anything that will inadvertently tie our hands elsewhere.
Right. Yep. Yep. So I've got a whole strategy section in the draft right now even. Just lays out completely steps after, after adoption that we would need to take. Yeah. Yeah. And if you wanted to now do a work session prior to adoption, what that actually would look like, we could, we could do something like that too. Okay.
So then 92.06.
That's it. I, I can make the motion up.
And if you have any better language for me.
Oh, for the other?
Yeah.
I'll talk with you later or afterwards on.
Okay. Maybe just throw that into the motion too.
Oh, for the
Thank you. Yes. Thanks.
I move a group of wardens, number three or four, on first consideration change in section 92.06 to A to change the first line of the addition to re-including any land use plans that are adopted as components of the C2C, C2C plan period. In other words, striking, including but not limited to the A's urban fringe plan. And then leaving the second sentence as it currently is. Also that the word handicap disaffairs any place in the, the ordinance be changed to persons with disabilities or other language as suggested.
Second. I was making sure you were finished.
I am, yes.
Move the seconded. Any further discussion? Working.
All right.
Face little eye.
Over six, seven.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, and send second consideration. I can do that. Just a second. I need that we set second consideration on. Just remember that. It's the date.
Could you shoot?
June, June 7th or June 7th.
Looked in seconded, working. All right. Face little eye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, please.
Thanks.
Additional items. Generation of resolution 22-91 appropriation amendment. Welcome back.
So as you're all aware, whenever a bunch of amendments done, if the money, the departments want to spend the dollars, they have to be appropriated. So this is the appropriation resolution for the amendment you just did.
I would give approval of our presentation 22-91. That will be seconded, cut inside, working. Face little eye. Or excuse me, the public hearing.
No, no need to open another one.
Two, I was thinking. Moving on, we have nothing for departmental reports or other reports, upcoming agenda items. Don't happen. We're next to here. Okay. All right. Moving on to public comment. Number two, comments from the public on the gen, items not on this agenda. Board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If you would like to make public comments, we have chat. FY. For the sense of apology, she had a call to jump on. Okay. Brenda was planning to make a comment. Okay. Anyone else who would like to make public comment, raise your hand on soon. And no one will close public comment number two. Oh, sorry. We have, we had a public comment. Okay. One moment.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Could you state your name for us, please?
Leesel Danielson.
Did you say that again? I'm sorry, it broke up.
Leesel Danielson.
Leesel Danielson. All right. Go right ahead.
Well, I'm not, it has to do with the Ames Urban Fringe Plan and you kind of touched on it. So I don't know if I can. Well, I'm not, it has to do with the Ames Urban Fringe Plan and you kind of touched on it, so I don't know if I can speak on it, but I'm not asking you to take action on it. I'm really concerned because Amelia keeps using the word strategy and that sounds sneaky to me. And I don't mean to be rude, but it sounds like with those, she said, one of the things that's going to come back is the conditional uses. And I am really concerned that those conditional uses that are currently on the Ames, the proposed Ames Urban Fringe Plan are going to become adopted as part of the strategy. And then people like Brad Perkins are going to have their property be nonconforming. And I feel like that's going to happen and I feel like it's been indicated that's going to be happening. But it's a little evasive and I just want to, I want to, it sounds like she gave a clear answer on that at the meeting last Monday. But then it's evasive again. So I want to make sure that that, the people that already have those conditional uses with the adoption of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan don't then become nonconforming. And it sounds by, when she says she's going to change the code, that they are then going to become nonconforming. And I'm really worried for my neighbors and other people that I know that that would happen to. So I just want to make that comment.
Thank you. Can I just clarify something? The changes that Amelia was talking about are changes in the county's review of our code ordinances, which we've been working on for over a year, just updating those. She wasn't talking about bringing those forward as a result of the Ames Urban Fringe and the strategies are later as they as it refers to the Ames Urban Fringe. So I, I think there were two separate things happening there.
Oh, okay, I guess it's in the Ames Urban Fringe Plan where it says at the very end, a strategy of doing, changing ordinances and zoning based on the adoption of the plan, which because those conditional uses are listed. I'm concerned that the, the strategy upon adoption will to be, make those nonconforming. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to make public comment? Okay, seeing no one will close public comment number two. Reason assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. That's working.
Have been looking at interviews and records checking for emergency management administration position. We'll continue to do that.
Need to talk. You might need to raise a speaker.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've been working with the executive committee, full second committee of the emergency management commission on the hiring process for administrator. We'll be continuing to work on that this week. Friday morning, our staff committee working with on a pipeline is having a meeting. Just see for progress there, seeing what we need to get done to be ready for twenty twenty-three. And I think that's pretty much what I've got for the rest of the week.
Yeah, meeting this afternoon. I'm here to, Wednesday, all day Wednesday, Friday. Economic Development Commission meeting. Thursday, I have two Zoom meetings, one all morning on aging and having to function. That was part of a series to the aging resources that I'm on in the afternoon. It's the first session of the mental health summit. Of course, it's the next. Both to the afternoon, so my day is. Zoom, Zoom on Thursday. Okay, yeah, I have on my calendar for this afternoon. Just touchy ways with the classification compensation thing. Yeah, and then living with potential order number four, the boost board this afternoon. And then tomorrow morning, Melissa and I have a meeting with Claudia Schible about the personally actually inclusion. Management training that we're looking into. And then I have interviews for the VA commission tomorrow and Thursday and Monday. Next Tuesday through Thursday, I will be on the DC trip with the H Chamber of Commerce. So I'm planning to zoom into our meeting next Tuesday because we will have already landed. But we don't have anything scheduled until a little bit later in the afternoon. So I should be in my hotel, able to zoom in if. That's all that for a case. We've detected work ahead inside, working on face all eye. We are adjourned. Thank you.